Okay, we're going to call to order the special meeting of July 7th, 2022. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here. Thank you, and thank you everybody for coming tonight. Madam Clerk, you have a comment first.
Yes, we are trying something new with the Zoom being in-house, and we have realized that there's an echo from a feedback, so if there does turn out to be anyone who wants to, from the public, to comment, I will take the main unit and leave the room, so that the echo will eliminate, and then I'll come back.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, everybody, for coming. Staff, thank you for coming tonight. We are here tonight to talk about some bond money that has a expiration date, and we need to talk about the priorities of the City Council. So, that's what we're going to do tonight. We're going to start out with the Mayor Pro Tem is going to talk a little bit about the Community House and kind of where we got from here, then we're going to turn it over to Nick and his team to do a presentation and talk about their recommendations on what we do, and then the Council is going to discuss it and hopefully make some decisions tonight in the direction that we would like to go. So, any questions before we start? Should we do the pledge? Yeah, let's do the pledge. So, let's all rise for the pledge. Thank you, Mr. Sage.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I will recognize the Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia, to give us a little background on the Community House.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to kind of bring Council and the public up to speed regarding the Community House, and I will note that Alan Smith, the Director of the Community House, is in the audience. Thank you for being here as well. So, as we're going to be discussing allocation of the remaining bond dollars, I thought it was appropriate to kind of give a little bit of the historic perspective regarding the Community House as one of our key facilities in the city. So, kind of going back to 2015, it's been identified publicly that we had some deferred maintenance on the building that we needed to address. So, at that time, there were some numbers discussed in the neighborhood of $700,000 to do windows, siding, new roof, HEVAC, et cetera. So, that goes back to 2015. As we all know from the packet tonight, bonds were issued in August of 2019 by the city, $5 million. It was a total bond proceeds of $5,355,000. And at that time, the purpose of those bonds was for facilities. The primary focus was the new DPW building that Council agreed was a priority, as well as Community House and the other facilities, city-owned facilities. We also did an Amoresco Facilities Asset Management Plan. We did a study that was validated along those lines. So, DPW, we broke ground and had a ribbon cutting, so broke ground November 19. October of 2020, we cut the ribbon on it, so that facility is up and running. And then in March of 2021, so last March, City Council approved $1,020,000 for the purpose of Community House improvement. So, that was $711,000 of bond money and $309,000 of general fund money. So, with that agreement, we also authorized the city to sign a 20-year agreement with the Community House, the nonprofit that runs the entity that we all know and love as the Community House. So, within that 20-year agreement, there is also a revenue sharing back to the city component of it, that with the improvement with the construction, that that 8% of revenue would come back to the city. And in that City Council action, we authorized Wing Construction to do a design-build construction project. So, what happened next was it went to the Planning Commission. So, between March of '21 and September of '21, drawings were done. It went through both a design review at the Planning Commission and a public hearing. So, by September of 2021, we finally had approved drawings. So, with that, it costs us $80,000 to get those drawings, and Wing Construction went out to bid to their subcontractor, so that's September of 2021. In early December of 2021, the facilities meeting met, committee met, and we received some bad news, that Wing Construction failed to meet the requirements. They came in with a $3 million cost, $2 million overbid, stated due to inflation, no bids or single quotes from subcontractors, et cetera. What has happened since then is the Community House, as an organization, raised their hand and said, hey, can we try to continue to work on this at no cost to the city? So, at no cost to the city to date, the Community House, led by Alan Smith, coordinating and working with our building department, has continued to review and refine those designs to have some other drawings made, and they have found some, what I'll call, errors in the current design that had been quoted through Wing. The tresses, the basement size, use of elevation, the corridor and second entrance. I'm not an architect, so I'm not going to plan to understand all the details on there, but for the purpose of our discussion, what is really important for Council to know is that there's more than just inflationary costs in that original $3 million response from Wing. So, you know, if we could get some normalized material and labor costs, get the scope back to the original intent, it is likely that the cost for the project that was, I'll say, initially authorized by City Council, would be back to a more reasonable number for the City of Rochester, $1,003, $1,005. I hesitate to put any specific numbers out there, but I think from Council's perspective, we've all had this $3 million number, because that's the last we've seen from the City Manager's packet. So, just really wanted to put that out there before Council, since one of our objectives is to allocate the remaining bond dollars, of which, in my opinion, we have already allocated $711,000 to the Community House. So, just wanted to give that background. And then I also had a question for Finance Director Maggio. In terms of the requirements and what we need to do for the bond dollars to meet our requirements, my understanding is that we could use road projects to satisfy that spending requirement. And so, what dollars? I know we've just completed Forest Street, we've completed Helen or working on Helen. What road dollars have we already in our budget, already approved by City Council, that we could use to satisfy the bonding requirement?
Absolutely. We will bring that up. That is correct, that the remaining bond dollars can be used for the road projects. This was the cost-sharing sheet from it. As we all know, Helen Street is being currently under construction right now, so as an example, the line I want to look at is this one here. It's the non-participating one. That's not part of the DW, SRF amounts. And then, for an example, Helen's at $705,000 without any of the other items we're going to talk about separately tonight, which is more than, obviously, the remaining bond proceeds. And then, we just wrapped up Forest Street, a little over $400,000, and then, of course, last year with Oak and Wilcox as well.
So, we have to allocate roughly $650,000, and we have already spent or will spend on roads more than that.
Correct, yes.
So, I would like to, you know, entertain the discussion in the presentation that Administration has prepared, but I would like Council to consider that as an option, that we direct Administration to allocate the remaining bond dollars to the already-approved road projects.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Those, I didn't see these, those last few slides in the packet. Could we get those added to the Manager's Report, the one that Mayor Pro Tem presented?
Absolutely. We can add these in, and anything else, there may be some other ones, too, that we're putting together some information today that we may use.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then, so, Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia, has suggested something, I think City Administration is now going to present, is suggesting other ways to use the money, which I think are in our packet. So, we'll have the City Manager and crew and staff, not crew, not a Waterford man, do the presentation, and then, you know, then we'll discuss it. So, Mr. City Manager, Nick?
Thank you. Mayor, number one, thank you all for taking the time tonight to do this. We, as we're going through this process, we're trying to be as streamlined as possible, as efficient as possible. The committees are great. We're not breaking up the committees, facilities or infrastructure or any of them. This was just something that, after a lot of work with staff, we felt like all seven of you need to be on board with what we're doing, all at the same time, so we can all hear each other's questions, concerns. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, number two, for your presentation. That's a great outline, right, spot on, understand that. Number three, we're not here to argue with anybody, we're not here to pound the desk and get our way. We simply, I'd simply thank these folks right here, Marcy especially, for taking the, this bull by the horns to get this presentation going, to do our best to analyze the situation we're in with the bond money, knowing that we have an expiration date, to look, to meld in what we talked about at the goals and objectives this past spring, while projects that we know that are out there, then Anthony filled us all in or educated us all on, again, to Mayor Pro Tem's idea, what can we use those monies for? I remember the initial conversation with Treasurer Maggio was, let's just write a check for Helen and call it good, and we don't have to worry about anything. But when we backpedaled and we looked at what we talked about at goals and objectives, there were other things that we need to get done. Those things are eligible under this tranche of money that we're going to get, like Marcy's term, and we decided that we would sit in a room for hours, this whole staff, did yeoman's work, and came up with a recommendation and then a presentation ultimately of what we think is a good way to spend those dollars. Anthony, Anthony's going to say at some point tonight, it's all general fund money in the end, and we get that. And so, you could, it's how you move it around, that's one thing, but we're trying to be as efficient as possible to do that. And then, on top of that, at the last couple of days, I'm going to say maybe a week, we got a couple of softballs pitched to us by the contractor, talking about sidewalks, and then the contractor, talking about materials have gone up. It's no secret that these contractors are struggling like everybody else. We did not take offense to that. They know they have executed contracts. They didn't thumb us, they didn't do anything wrong, they just simply put together a memo. We asked them to write their thought process, so we could analyze it. Aseel, thank you for what you did. She went through and verified and adjusted some of their numbers that they did. We were reminded that when we get to the one about on Forest Street, we had pre-bought some materials, so we could avoid this happening. So, we got all that worked out. So, this is very complete staff work, so we should be able to answer any question you have, and we're going to go through this as a team. If you, I think you can stop us along the way and ask us anytime you want, so that we all feel comfortable with what we're asking for. And basically, this package, the beginning of it is, we're recommending using bond dollars. The end of this gets into some philosophical things we need to talk to you about. We will not be asking you to make decisions on those tonight. Things like the water rates, that will come at a reg, the regular meeting Monday night, things like that, but we're going to take this opportunity that we have all seven of you together to try to get as much at you as we can. If we're going too fast, too slow, just let us know. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Marcy, and Marcy's going to start walking us through this.
All right, Marcy.
Thank you. I know it's the summer, and the last place you want to be is in style, in a, in a meeting, but we appreciate your time. So, just as Nick had led with, we have to go over what the 2019 facilities and capital bond gained for the city. So, we have the bond proceeds of $1,000, excuse me, $5,300,000. We have so far spent a number of that, it's probably about 88% of that, so we're talking tonight about how we're going to spend that last 12%, the $646,000. So, these are some of the priority projects that the staff has pulled together. Nick alluded to those. So, if you don't mind, we can come back to this, if you'd like to see this slide for the projects that we'll present in the deck, but if you don't mind, we'll go on into the contractors' contract change requests. So, Alec, do you want to talk about Italia and DePonyo?
Sure. So, Italia is the...
We got to pass the mic. We got to share the mic.
Can we grab that one up there, too?
Here, the wealth.
Thanks, Senator.
There we go. Can you hear me now? All right. So, Italia is the contract we've been using for our sidewalk program, and they, about a month ago, submitted a request for a slight price increase for their, each one of their four-inch, six-inch, and eight-inch concrete slabs. It's about a 20% or so increase. In the memo I prepared, listed the actual cost. It's about, I apologize, I don't have it right in front of me, I was scrolling as I was...
Keep on talking.
An increase of $21,409 if we were to still do the same amount of work as we had planned before. Excuse me. So, that's from $79,000-ish to $101,000. So, as, you know, Deputy City Manager Ben has already said, they all understand that we have, you know, a contract with them, and we, you know, whatever decisions could be to deny it, so tonight, we're having in front of you for a decision to either approve it and can still do the same amount of work, increase in the total cost, or approve the request and reduce the amount of work, to make the total cost the same as we had planned for before, or to deny the request and continue on with the same prices that we currently have under contract with them. And this has been a company we've used, I'm trying to think if I'm past seven years or so, does that sound about right?
Do you, would you like a seal to talk?
So, is this for current projects that we're doing, or is this these ones?
Correct. This would be for Zones 5 and 6, I believe, Jason, to finish out kind of our current rounding of sidewalk program.
Yeah. This is in Section 5 and 6 that we're, we're considering starting all over next year.
5 and 6 being the east part of town.
Stony Creek Bridge, 1 and 2.
So, Nick, do we want, you want us to talk about that now, or are you going to go through your whole?
No, I think what we should, we talked about, we think we should go through all of them and then come back one at a time.
Sounds good.
Because, to be fair, so you can see them all, and you might like some, you might not like some, so.
Just to make one more comment, we did include in the packet some bid openings from other, other communities nearby for recent projects, and the new price that the contractors are proposing is still, I think, if not the lowest price out there compared to other projects. So, with the, you know, with approving the increase, we're still getting one of the best prices out there, and if we were to go out to rebid for future projects, we're probably looking at maybe even doubling what we would be paying if we approved it.
If Aseel, could Aseel just?
So, basically, you have Cosmo for probably the last seven years during your sidewalk repairs. The only time they asked for increase, it was probably last year for 20 cents, I think, and then it was just adjusted through a contract mod. This year, because of what's going on, inflation, everybody's asking for increase. He did say that he will honor the cost that we have, but he will not be happy to continue with the cost that we have, and the increase he's asking for, I did compare it to recent bids that we got for this year from other contractors for other communities that we represent, and he's still cheaper. So, if we go out for bids, I don't think we're going to get the prices that we have, even with the increase he's asking for.
Councilmember Salvia, Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia?
So, how long would these prices be good for? Just this remainder of this calendar year, or does it continue?
We asked him for three years, didn't we?
We asked him for, to finish this year and additional years, and he's a very good contractor, and he's interested in maintaining his relationship with the city. I, I'm pretty confident it's going to carry over.
Right now, it's for, to finish this cycle.
So, would this increase be an annual basis on the remaining years, or does this cover the remainder of his contract?
He's, so, his contract, basically, we just keep extending for a year or two. So, if we agree with this increase, I think he did say he's going to hold it for three years, but we need to double-check with him, and then would be an extension for three years for the unit price that we're basically going to agree on.
But, just for you, the ask tonight would be just for that amount of money, which ends 5 and 6, and the bond money would only go to that amount, nothing beyond the next few years.
Councilmember Harrison?
I'd just like to ask a clarifying question. We have a contract with an existing contractor. We agreed on a set amount of money, and now they're going back on the contract and asking for an increase on the original agreed-upon price.
The way he explained it is...
The answer is yes.
Okay, that's all I needed.
That's good enough.
Councilmember Albrecht?
So, Nick, so, is this, this sidewalk contract just keeps going on in perpetuity? I mean, when do we, I know it was, I'm reading the memo, the project was bid seven years ago, then adjusted in 2019, and you were talking about phases now 5 and 6. Do we then, next year, go back to Phase 1, and then, I mean, this is just...
In perpetuity.
And when do we approve the next contract from them? I think that was, I think the question Councilmember Sage was asking. We're approving, we're discussing tonight this adjustment of $1.25, but next year, are they already going to be working on sidewalks again next year at this $1.25 increased rate, and then continuing on, or when does it get rebid, I guess?
So, it's up to the City Council, like, when you want to end the contract? We can just, if you want to do the increase for this year only and end it, we can just do the contract for this year and end it, and then we go out for bid next year. But since his unit prices are still good, we can do a three-year contract mod for three years and hold the unit prices for the increase that we're asking.
So, the contract does end this year?
You have an option, either close it, like, after this year and then go out for a bid, or you want to extend it for three years.
And I might, the delay, and this was, we found the opportunity in the DDA, they had money set aside, we, Jason did a whole inventory of all the bad sidewalks in the DDA, it was $134,000. We got it cheaper than that, because Cosmos' prices were cheaper. So, we asked him to do that all in one section, in one segment of time, and then we had an early winter, and he couldn't finish 5 and 6, which we wouldn't have been here, to be honest with you, but we got great prices for the DDA, they appreciated it, and we spent their money and finished all of that, so that's why we're here.
Why wouldn't they wait until the next contract cycle to ask for an increase? Why do we have to modify the contract that we're currently in?
Because the cost of the materials have gone up right now. So, he said, his words were, I'm coming to Rochester and paying to do your program. It's actually coming out of my pocket, I'm not, I'm going to make zero dollars.
And they're not, prices aren't going down in the next three years, I don't think. Okay.
Okay.
That's number one. Marcy?
So, the next one is the DePonyo contract request. Do you want to give a little backstory, and I'll find your backup for that, Alec?
Yep.
Just one second.
Okay. There we go.
Thank you. So, just as with Italia, DePonyo Contracting, who is contracted to do our DW, RF projects, is asking for a price increase as well. They're asking for, the final request came in at $55,474. That was after some negotiation and review from City Engineer Putros. To note, they did, at the beginning of this project, purchase a lot of the materials ahead of time, which was good, in preparation of price increases. This increase they're asking for now is just for materials, not for labor, anything like that, and it's for items that have not purchased ahead of time. And for the same reason as Italia, they have a contract that was approved years ago, when prices have steadily rose, and so now they're asking for this price increase. So, options would be to deny it, you know, they have a signed contract, and they can continue on with that, or approve their request of $55,000.
This one's pretty black and white, it's one or the other. Work's got to get done, and Chris and his group, they've been a good contractor, and we put them through the wringer, making sure you bought stuff early, so we could avoid this, but no one saw the gas price. So, again, not a unreasonable ask, and acknowledging we have an existing contract, and I'll eat it if I have to, but that doesn't make me very happy, not me, I'm being Chris right now, so. So, that one's pretty black and white. Okay.
DePonyo is also going to be the contractor for this next, the next project that's presented to you. It'd be the Helen Street Water and Sewer Maines and Sewer Lead Replacement.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Councilmember Sage, you had a question?
I did. So, with, with the increase, and I understand the, why the request was brought forward, so the $5,800, where did that go? Because it wasn't reflected in the $646,750. So, did it just get back absorbed out of the general fund?
We haven't paid it yet, so, so it isn't anywhere yet. Did that answer your question?
Is it coming out of the bond money, is what?
We're recommending that it come out of the bond money.
So, one of the other items would have to be reduced $5,801.
So, in the packet, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but that mill and fill option that we get to, the last one, that's really a plug figure. So, whatever money's left over, we're, it's in here as $300,000, but it may be $326,000, or it may be, you know, $280,000. It's going to depend on your selections and your choices, what that mill and fill amount will end up being. It's, it's the plug.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, on the next option is, again, the Helen Street. The Helen Street has come in at approximately $143,000. DePonyo would be the contractor for that one, so we're recommending that this project be paid for also out of the bond balance.
Correct. So, this would be for additional work on the project that's currently ongoing right now on Helen and Rose Lawn, or Roseland, Rose Lawn.
Rose Lawn.
Still on the street, sorry.
That's okay.
It'd be for additional water main on the section of Helen that connects Helen and Alice together at the very southern end, and then to replace a section of sanitary sewer on the southern section of Helen, where before construction began, cameras were used to assess the condition of both the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer, and the good news was that included with the storm sewer, indicating that was in good, in good condition, and we didn't have to replace it, so that was a savings of $111,000 in the general fund. However, it showed that the, that part of the sanitary sewer was starting to belly or to kind of valley and collect sewage. So, that's not something you not want, something you don't want to have and can lead to backups and that sort of thing, and so, we would like to replace that, as well as replace the water main at the end of Helen connecting to Alice. And then, the plan would be to also pave that section that connects Helen to Alice later on, and so, now would be a good time to do that water main before we were to pave that section.
So, getting good news, bad news, we saved $111,000. It happened at the meeting in this room with the, the folks in the neighborhood. One gentleman remembered 12 years ago, I remember you guys did this, and Jason remembered it, and they started going back through cards and finding stuff, and then camered it, and it was like, great, we don't have to do the storm sewer, but the cameras found the belly in the sewer, so.
That was around the March timeframe, so there was other administration involved, so that was all found at that time.
And that one's kind of time-sensitive, because where they're at right now in construction, they're at the point where they need to do this work, and it would kind of cost more money if they had to come back at a later time, and so, it's, that one's probably the most time-sensitive out of all of them.
And again, we didn't do this, throw a blanket over this, that could come out of water and sewer, we know that. So, it's got to get done. If we're going to do it now, it's, it's a problem, so, full disclosure, that is eligible straight out of water and sewer, out of the, of the fund. Not planned for, but the balance and the volume, or the, the fund balance could cover that if it had to.
So, as Nick was mentioning, later, we're going to pull up the interactive model, and we can show you some different choices and different fund sourcing that you can apply to these different projects as well.
Councilmember Peterson?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. No, so, I mean, but it's truly an essential need right now, so.
Right. We tried to hit these in orders of priority and criticality, so that's kind of why they're in the order that they're presented. So, the next one is Community House Maintenance, regular maintenance, replacement of the HEVAC, and electrical upgrade. This is estimated to cost approximately $100,000, and we're recommending bond balance to pay for that.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem, how does this $100,000 compare to the 1.2 to 1.5 million? Was, is this part of that number, or is this in addition to what you and Alan Smith are recommending?
Yes, there was some HEVAC in that number. There was not the electrical in that number, so yes and no, it was in the $1,020,000. And this, these two, I'll say, maintenance requests are the two items that would... And this, these two, I'll say, maintenance requests are the two items that would need to be done whether we do the upgrade to the community house or we do not. So that's why staff worked with Alan Smith, and they are on this list.
That's why I thought, thank you for the clarification.
That'll take it from residential, electrical to commercial.
Correct.
Okay, Marcy.
Okay, so the next one is City Hall. City Hall's just a lobby refresh. I don't know if you noticed when you passed through, there's just some painting, broken tile, there's just a little bit of refreshing that could occur there, make it a little bit more inviting for our guests to City Hall. So we're estimating that to be at approximately $20,000.
So if I may, Mr. Mayor, so this wouldn't have been here because we were going to do the vestibule. When we did the vestibule, that would have tore out the lobby. We were doing the vestibule because former management felt that he wanted, he wanted to move people down here. We got the block grant money available to do that, so we bid it out, it was way, way over budget. And then, as we worked together, even with him, to suggest, we don't want people down here, the reason he had a vestibule was if you open the doors now and somebody was sitting there, you'd get blown away. So you have a vestibule airlock before you got there, so that, it made sense. That meant we had to move a door over here, and then do this, and do that, do that. So staff got together a couple of months ago, and so we don't, we don't need a vestibule at all, there's no reason to do it, we'd rather reprogram the money to put it towards the bike paths and keep that park getting going. So we would, if we would have had a facilities committee, we would ask facilities to make a recommendation to this body to say, scrap that, we already checked with our CDBG people, they're like, just reprogram it, no problem. They like the idea of putting it in the park to keep the paths going, because we still have a lot of paths to do. So that's, we wouldn't have had this $20,000, we could pull that out of a maintenance fund if we had to. But again, it was eligible, as Mayor Protam said, as a facilities cost, and that's why this is here.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. I remember part of that project, the idea was to be handicap accessible and ADA compliant. How do we still meet the needs of?
So the problem is that, might have been sold a little wonky, because once you get in this building, the only handicap accessibility is that elevator, that elevator is horrible. So it didn't do anything to correct the front. We already, when we redid the road out there, we cut two ramps to the sidewalks, so we are ADA compliant now, we have a push button, it all worked, it was, it was just the way it was presented.
But how do people get up the stairs to pay the, like their water billers?
They could technically, we come down, and they go in that elevator.
There's a, there's a valve off.
Yeah, there's, yeah. Yes, we have communication from here to there.
So we are currently ADA compliant.
Correct. I mean, it's not.
It's accessible.
It's clunky.
It's not, it's not perfect, but yes, it's technically, we're.
And we have a push button, we have, best we could do with the existing conditions through the building official, we're compliant.
I'd like us to continue to think about accessibility and making sure that we're, you know, reaching all of our residents' needs.
I understand.
Marcy.
So the next project that we are presenting is LRPP Road Project. This is going to seem familiar to you, council just voted to approve that. It was going to be using road dollars. It would be bond balance dollar accessible. So we're proposing to use some of the bond funds for this, no change in the project, nothing new about this, just a different source of financing it.
So really, there's no budget impact to that one, because we've already approved it?
Correct.
Councilmember Albrecht.
So you're, you're suggesting, instead of paying it out of the road budget, to move it under the bond?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. So this one, like the sewer one, could be paid out of the road fund? Thank you.
The next is the plug, the plug slide that I was talking about. This is additional mill and fill. It is, it would be taking road improvement and maintenance to roads that have not been currently identified and, and budgeted for. So these would be, for instance, you know, your, your terries, or your, your streets that have been identified verbally as having some issues, but have not been put into that plan for this year's improvements, so.
So can I just jump on this one a little bit more? So we're not asking you to pick roads tonight? We went, Jason went with Bowen paving, looked at the Pesa ratings, talked to a seal about to do it right, you would core, do a bunch of engineering money, we said, how about we don't spend any money, sorry, seal, on engineering, and we would just do a mill and fill of two inches to lengthen the roads for about four to five years, maybe six years, some of them residential, they'll last longer. So it happens to be Linwood, Terry, Lysander, Third Street, there's six streets, I think we could do a two-inch overlay and, and make a lot of people feel better about the roads for, again, four to five years with about $300,000. But this is, these are roads that aren't even on the plan for water, sewer, complete streets, these, these aren't even being talked about yet, so that was the idea behind that.
Can you do the list of those streets again?
I think you guys have them, I think I got them all.
I don't know if I have the list, but I just want to say, the core of the pavement is just to tell us the thickness of the pavement, it's not engineering money, it's just basically pouring through the pavement to see how thick it is. Because if you only have two inches, you can't mill and fill, because you'll be going right through the stone. If we have four inches, then they can take the top two inches off and then put basically back asphalt.
No, I appreciate that. It was if we had to engineer them, we would have to pay for engineering these, like the seal hit it right, exactly. So I know it's Linwood, Lysander, it was between Mahaffey and Inglewood.
I have a list right here, it's West Third from Wilcox to Oak, Terry Street, Mahaffey to Inglewood, Highland from Mahaffey to Inglewood, Linwood from Maine to Mahaffey, and then from Mahaffey to Inglewood, Inglewood from Highland to Romeo, Taylor from Rose Lawn to Fairview, West Third from Taylor to Wilcox. And all of these roads under current prices is about $330,000, if you were to do all of these right now.
So Lysander isn't on there, because Nick had mentioned Lysander.
No, Lysander's not on.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam.
So this would be asphalt, right? So in asphalt, one of the big components is oil, oil's at a high. So what is the price per whatever versus what the price per whatever was a year ago? Can you give us some comparison on how those prices have changed?
I don't think he has the old one, and I'm trying to see what he has for.
Jason, on a percentage, what's Bowen been this year versus last year? Because he's already done a couple of jobs for us, about.
Honestly, it changes because of the mix, depends on what you use, so.
He doesn't have a cost per unit, he just have a total.
Yeah, he didn't put per square foot. Oh, that's a hit there.
You can get us that information.
$2, $22 for, I don't know what it was before to do the.
Yeah, we have to find that out. It's good, it's good.
A dollar ten per square foot of middle area.
So again, we would work with the contractors to, that's our, if we had a bucket of money, then we would get, stretch it as far as we could, based, it could change weekly, literally. Like you said, you're right, it's based on petroleum, so we wouldn't know exactly how far we could get until we committed to them to do the work, and then they would give us a price and fix it for the season.
I do want to say one thing, we did have put estimates together for mill and fill, like just, basically, I used Google Image to measure the length of the road and the width, and then we did compare a couple of the streets, and he was lower than the estimated cost. So like, to see if he was fair in his prices, I think he was, because when I compared it to the estimates, he was lower.
So at this point, we would go into the, we were planning to go into the interactive model, and then just do a little analysis on different funding sources. So I don't know if you would like to take a moment and have any discussion on any of the different options, or if you'd like to just jump in to interactive model.
Right, because I mean, the next slide, we get into the Main Street Future Project, that's a different discussion. So we'll, we'll do this one before we start this one.
I have questions on some of the slides, I don't know if that's.
Yep, go ahead.
Is this the appropriate time, or you want me to wait?
No, go ahead, now's the time.
The very first slides that we looked at with the contractor, I'm still like thinking about those. I've never seen a contract come back and ask for a price increase before, so I'm just curious if this is like common practice in the industry to have people come and ask for price adjustments? And then I'm also curious if hypothetically the housing bubble bursts, and we have now less revenue as a city, can we go to the contractors and ask for the price to be lowered? Because we are now in a tight spot, would they ever do that and consider that? Like, why would I ever change what I'm going to pay in a contract? I wouldn't do that in my personal life, why do that here?
Councilmember Harrison, I know I've taught to some other city managers across the state, and they've all been facing the exact same thing with contractors, even on current projects coming in, asking for price increases.
So if I could help, maybe, hang on, Jason, that, it's a not unusual request, this is not in normal times, this is, this is like a quadrupling. These guys eat it a lot of times, or they'll, we asked them, are you going to, if it came down 30%, are you going to give us 30% credit? They don't answer, of course, but that doesn't happen. This is such a wide swing, that's why we had, talked to the city manager folks, and it was like, this is extraordinary circumstances. So again, be clear, they understand they're under contract, and they know, they're worried about relationships with us also, so. They asked us a couple of months ago, and we were pushing them off as long as we could, hoping prices would come down, and they would withdraw their request, they haven't.
I mean, we've seen extraordinary circumstances in like '07, when, you know, the housing market did crash, and we lost so much revenue. I'm sure no one, I, I'd love to hear if people were giving us breaks at that time, and why we would give these contractors a break.
And a fair question, but, and I will also tell you, back then, very rarely did you enter into a contract that tied somebody down, no contractor was going to tie themselves down for three years. We're pretty good at getting three, four, three years, up to five-year commitments, and if I was a contractor, how could they see out five years? This is exactly what happens to them, and if he has to eat this, that's because he bid out too long. We like when they bid out too long, because we get better pricing, but it, it works both ways, and this time it bid them, not us, so.
Councilmember Peterson.
Oh, no, I just want to add, though, even in the real estate world, if you're building a house today, you are going to get these same type of changes coming at you with everything. When the material goes up, new construction houses were going up $12,000 a month just to the added cost of what the cost of goods were, and now they're at 20. So it's not changing, and I remember, like the salt, even for us to order salt, we have to buy that in advance, otherwise it's going up as well. So, and other projects here have done this, we had change orders on the DPW building because of unforeseen, and also some other things that were needed, so, and they've all had that.
Casey.
So if you remember, you gave the council about the long-term contractor cemetery. Council approved an increase to that vendor because of fuel costs, and we were able to negotiate a flat cost, because he was offering, when it's bad, I'm going to have to charge you more, when it's good, I'll give you a refund, so we actually come with a flat fee. So you guys have already experienced that with the cemetery vendor for cutting grass.
Councilmember Harrison, other questions? Any questions on any of this?
I guess I'll just offer an opinion on everything. So, please do.
Thank you.
Everything, this is going to be a while.
Yeah. Okay, the LRPP Road Project is already funded under our road funds, right? So I can put that aside. The contractors, I'm sympathetic to that. The cost of that LRPP project almost covers everything contractors need. To me, that's a wash. The Helen Street thing is time sensitive, but it's not planned for under the water and sewer fund. So that, to me, means bond funds should be allocated to that. Community House, so there's been so many different figures of what's truly required for the community house. Is $100,000 enough for what you need right now?
For the, for the two items that we're presenting?
Are there other items that are needed? If these are the two priorities, are there other items that are truly needed now?
I wish.
In discussions with Alan, no, $100,000, those two items would cover.
I mean, other than wanting the complete project done, so you put it into truly needed now category, right?
Okay, okay, and that's fair. And then I think whatever washes out then into mill and fill is, that would be my recommendation if we start playing with the model.
Okay. Just want to. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you. So for everything that's essential, I see everything on here as essential for us to maintain the city as far as, I mean, I know top priority is Helen Street, they're in the process of it, we don't want them to have to come back, and it'll cost us more to dig up and waste asphalt that we're paying for. The other contracts for cost of goods, I'm okay with that, just because I know that that's, we have no choice, and I don't want to go out to bid and lose them, because then it's going to cost us even probably double. Most quotes received today are, they don't, they'll go up. I would like to see the maintenance of the entrance of the City Hall taken care of as well, within that, it's, I know it's only a small dollar amount, but I do think that it's necessary for not just aesthetics, but functionality. And the roads, I mean, I, I do want the roads taken care of, I mean, I think we have to use this money for essential needs right now. And the community house, two, the two needs there, I think 100% need those, so they can stay functioning and be up to code, because from what I understand, it's not. So I'm okay with these requests as they have, have been presented by the council. I think that they're very important, very essential services to use with bond dollars that was to be used for essential services.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Looking at the interactive model, there were some things on the interactive model in our packet, I don't know if it's going to be on when you pull it up on Police Carport, new windows, roof for City Hall, that you did not present today. Is that because you don't feel those are needed right now? And, and do the respective departments feel the same way?
Yes, I hate to speak for Police Chief, let's talk Police Carport first.
No, I would agree, and I think we've, you know, looked at this as a want rather than a need. You know, if I look at, I guess I would rather take my money and, and spread it around than use it essentially for the Police Department, so I'm in support of the plan that's been presented.
Thank you, Chief. And then I, I thought earlier in the presentation, the Helen Street $143,000 could be paid out of the water and sewer fund, but then I think Councilmember Sage said it, it couldn't. So I just want to.
It, it could be. It, it could be, but it was never.
Wasn't planned.
Planned for in the current fund.
Correct.
So that's why I looked at the bond dollars as being a perfect solution to that.
And the more expenses you keep out of water and sewer, it's, it's, there's an indirect-direct tie to rates, too. So the most, more expenses you can keep out, the more you can keep the rates in check.
Thank you.
And then, thank you, did you want to, we've had other ones in the City Hall, too. So we looked at new windows, we looked at roof, we decided that the, these could be planned for into the future, they're not critical, they're not urgent needs.
And some of these, too, they were coming from our Amoresco report, right? So as we talked in goals and objectives, we're trying to get a little bit ahead and stop being break, fix, and more forward planning, but even though the roof and windows are next items that, you know, the report says that you should look at doing it, when we, when we then take those figures and then do the assessment going, do we need to do a roof? Do we need to do the windows? It's great, it calculates itself out to be that way. That's where we all got together, looked at, did some inspections, then said, no, not right now. But we don't want to lose sight of it, right? So we don't want to know in maybe a couple of years from now, the roof might be fine now, but maybe we're going to have to start doing some patching, maybe we're going to have to, you know, it's starting to rot, no, we're going to have to actually do the replacements, we don't want to have a surprise to council to know, like, why didn't we know the roof needed to be replaced, right? It's just, it's one of those, not yet.
And you're looking at right there, that gray door, that came out at maintenance, now we needed it, Amoresco said it should have been replaced 10 years ago, so we just did that, and we had, that's our normal maintenance money, so we're cognizant of these, you don't see any seals broken on these windows, there was, somebody thought that was important, and we didn't. Thank you.
For, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Do you have some more to present, or?
If you want to go through this, we can do that, if you're ready to make some motion, don't let us stop you.
Councilmember Peterson, you have another comment?
Well, no, I just, in light of this presentation here, if there is. Uh, well, no, I just, in light of this presentation here, if there is, uh, no...
So, do we need a motion if...
You, you could break them down one at a time, or you could do a blanket motion?
And then, down, down below, as Marcy said earlier in the presentation, we have the different buckets. So, real quick, the top section there, that, um, yeah, where it says bond right there, that's the bond dollars left, and that, that's the 646, 750, and we can plug the options as they see fit. And then the new Millenfield projects, that number will change as just a, a plug figure, so that'll change depending on what we do. Down, um, yeah.
This one, we would have the 436 instead of the...
It'll, it'll just be the plugs. Then, in case council's like, well, yeah, we want to do the project, but no, we don't want it to be bond, that's where we have, which will look somewhat familiar by name to the quarterly report, where we have the general discretionary group of fund balances, the revolving equipments, all those that are all just discretionary to council. The roads, which are themselves tied together, major and local streets, and then the water and sewer funds below it.
It's the bond money that we're trying to respond to.
The balances that are in the yellow boxes, those are the amounts above the minimum, the recommended fund balance levels after the end of year three. So, that's the post-multi-year budget, three years out. General discretionary has 868,00614, so that's what we put in here as the starting point, just in case we're moving things around, that it would affect that.
Councilmember Gould?
Uh, yeah, this all makes sense to me. It, it does seem like there's been two separate, independent presentations this evening, and I'm wondering how this discussion that we've moved on to is related to what Councilmember Salvia presented with the already-approved 711,000 dollars and change. Where, where is that money sitting?
The, the, to kind of summarize that, that project that it was originally approved for, that was where it came in at $3 million, we just can't do it anymore. So, the money hasn't gone anywhere, it's, it's still here, but we can't do the project for the amount, we don't have a replacement project that comes in at the amount originally allocated, so it's essentially, all right, we can't do that, how are we gonna use the funds instead?
But I, I think you're asking, where is that?
Right, so from 711 to 646, where did that money go?
Well, it was just taken from the bond.
We paid, you know, waiting for the, the 80,000, a little over 80,000 for construction and the drawings and designs and all that already.
Plus the 645.
It's, it's the 650.
Yeah, it's really...
It's the number we're allocating, plus the cost for the engineering.
Right.
So, basically, we are spending the community house money, if we approve these projects. And, and we can decide to do that as a council, but I think we just, I'd like to have some discussion on, if we came in with a, a project, a contractor, to get this done at a reasonable number, where will we then find the money?
Councilmember Peterson?
Oh, thank you, mayor. Um, well, I guess, that's why I, I don't see it that as, that whole project is an essential service, though. I think the items that are needed right now for the HVAC and the electrical upgrade to make it code compliant, I think is most important to look at. The other part is not, and, you know, I know it's supposed to be, um, it was discussed to have that whole project done that way, and it's unfortunate that it came back the same way that these quotes are coming back, that they're more expensive now because of the time lapse. There's nobody today that's going to be able to come in with a quote that's even remotely close to the original that we were quoted, or have a contractor even do it. But, even one step further, though, there's really been no accountability to the city for the amount of funding that's been raised or received, that from the community house. Also, I know that the 990s are not complete, so without your 990s complete, you can't, yes, it is, it's on hold with the, with the federal government right now in the IRS. The 2020 is. 2021 hasn't been filed yet. So, if they're looking at a file right now, and you can't get a grant for over $5,000 or so from any source, if your 990's not in, we have other issues we have to think about, and I don't want to get into a financial situation there by putting aside essential dollars that have to be spent, correct? These have to be utilized per the, per the bond contract.
Correct, and to Councilmember Gould, like, the, that's part of the reason why we're having the discussion, right? So, the monies that were allocated for community house, it, it's a time-sensitive matter. And, and to Councilmember Peterson's point, we, we just don't have the time yet to get the thing vetted, brought back down in scale, and pricing, and materials being lower, and labor being lowered, to execute the already-approved, original plan that was supposed to be a little over a million dollars, instead of the $3 million. So, since we have to spend the bond proceeds by October 10th, and at least have a very detailed plan on exactly what you're doing with it, and why, if there's anything left over, by the 10th, we're having that discussion tonight, because having it tonight and early is giving us some time to get these things done. We can't wait till October meeting to then say, hey, we have, you know, 645,000 left, we need to spend this money, it's too late at that point, right? We, we just don't have the time to execute that quickly.
And I think it goes, I mean, I, I can almost compare the community house right now with the bond dollars that were put aside when we discussed that for that project, but then it was dissolved, hasn't been brought back to the table. Same thing with the DDA and the money they put aside in an account for the front porch project that ended up having to be used for the parking deck. I mean, now we have money here that has to be used, it should be going to essential services, so we're not raising the water rates, we're not taking any additional money out of the general fund, because, and then we actually, just to be able to make the community house project work, we, as a council, need to sit down and plan out, how are we going to budget to make that happen, and make it become a reality? Even without having additional funds or money being raised or anything, but we, we have to do that piece. I think that the biggest issue we had is when we overspent on the DPW building, okay? Because we should have had more money left over from that than what we ended up with, because what we ended up with is right here, and that was supposed to be almost double that. Because we budgeted, if, if I remember, it was 3.5 million dollars, okay? So, here, we're not at 3.5 million dollars. So, financially, I don't want to get into another situation where we're overlooking essential services to pay for something else that's not an essential service.
Councilmember Alpert?
Um, I think Anthony really captured what I was gonna say. I've been a supporter of the community house, and, and I understand, that's why I asked the question earlier, is the 100,000 all you need, all you could spend right now? You know, and, and I think you said, and Alan concurred, that, that's your need versus what, what you want to do. In an ideal world, yes, I, I'd love to put more money into the community house, but we're three months out of when we have to spend these bond dollars, and, and I don't think you're gonna be able to turn around projects that are gonna get the community house further down the road in, in that, in that time period. And I think what has been presented today, as, you know, as we, as we look at the interactive map, are things that our residents will see and, and go, okay, I, I can see roads being done, I can, you know, the Helen Street one is, is a no-brainer, and some of the other things. So, again, I support, especially, you know, what, even though, even though it's a plug figure for the Millenfield, when you listed those streets, I mean, people are gonna notice that. And, and, and when we do get the community house done, which I hope we do, you know, in, in the near future, through a combination of, um, whatever we allocate, whatever Alan and his team can raise through the private, private sector, I'd like to get that done at, at some point in time, but I think we're constrained by this three-month period to spend this money.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. So, I just want to go back to my opening comments. So, in my opening comments, I, I asked Anthony to speak to the dollars we have already spent on roads, and so I really want council to think about this. Do we want to add cost to our approved budget? That's really what we're contemplating. Are we gonna spend more money than what we've already approved in our budget? I think these are essential projects. I agree with the comments from council, they are essential. But do we want to, at this point, say we want to spend more than what we have approved in our budget? Because we can just allocate the bond money to the roads that we have already completed this year. 704,000 for Helen, and 404, 4th Street. We, that's already approved by us, we solve our county problem for the bond money. That is one solution. Then, in my mind, then we look at these and say, are these needed projects that we need to do? I, I just don't think we're, you know, it's like we're, we're just trying to spend the money, because we have this deadline. Now, the community house numbers are gonna come down, because there are errors in those quotes, and they also included exterior items for the building. So, you know, I can't tell you what the number is today, I would just ask, ask council to give that project till, uh, you know, we could still look to do a, a project next year on that. Can you give it six months for the committee to come back and, and bring it to city council? You know, let's, let's give that a pause, so that we can consider it. I, I just, I just don't want to let it go by, because we have this deadline, we have another way to address the deadline.
So, Anthony, can I ask you, Councilmember Harrison?
No, go ahead, ma'am.
Anthony, so, let's say we went with, with the administration's proposal. How do we fund the community house next year if they come up with the 1.2? How, how would we do that? Assuming, assuming the council wanted to do it? Or what, or what are some ideas that you have?
At the, there, there's two that, that come to mind off the top of my head. One is, you always have fund balance, right? And it's, start coming out of general discretionary, as an example, 800, and that'll go up some more as we roll forward in the, in the next couple of years. The other one is, you know, to keep in mind, too, we transfer over 400,000 a year on top of the dedicated infrastructure millage in the, in the city's operating rates. So, we have that 0.9 for dedicated millage for infrastructure. That still doesn't meet the projects and that, that we're doing, so we transfer additional monies on top of that. So, another option is, you know, if you're using them for roads, even the Millenfield, the 300 and all that, you can say, well, instead of having that 300 come from the general fund, let's have it come from the bond, major and local streets still gets its money, and then the general fund has that added into its balance, to then have the discussion and save for community house at a later point.
But that's a tax increase?
No. No. No.
It's been practiced, how we've been having to supplement that road fund now instead of next year, because we'd be doing all these roads, we would buy some good time with the residents to say, hey, you did a bunch of roads last year, and now we don't transfer that 400 the next year, and that could be there for the community house.
And, and even in the current year's budget, let's say, yeah, we want to go ahead and go through all this, the transfers are typically at the end of the year, you have until June 2023, to really have that decision on, do you want to transfer that extra 400, and, call it 450, it's a little under, call it 450,000, in this budget year? And you can do the same thing for next year, too, and there's $900,000. So, so there's ways to get to it without necessarily not losing all, all avenues to pay for a community house plan once it comes forward.
Council, thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. So, um, I just know that in the world that I have to work in, I know that people who are doing additions and things like that, I mean, you can't get a bedroom added on to a house and another room for under 150,000, okay? I don't know how with, I, I don't want to put money towards a project, again, that we don't have true numbers for. And that's, and it's unfortunate that that's what we had last time, but we can't do that. We spent $90,000 on a project that we can't do. I mean, it's great for the future, but we can't do anything with it now. I don't want to, I'm sorry.
I said that was a waste, you're right.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I, I really don't want us to do that. I would rather come up with another plan. I don't want to play musical chairs with money, either. I, I don't want to do that. The money's been put into these other accounts for a reason, and it's not, this isn't a dire thing to take away from the bond money that was supposed to be used for essential services, which I've been on since the very beginning, that's why I wasn't in favor of doing that, because that bond money came to us during a time when we had so much going on in the world of what took place, that, and it's unfortunate, too, that the DPW was over budget. But now, if we're looking at total essential services to use money for, that's being paid on very little, low bond dollars, I think it's the smartest thing to do financially for the city. And then, we actually plan and come up with a true plan on how to come up with the community house dollars. But I don't want to see that being used this way right now, because I think it would be a total waste, because there's no guarantees at all on what it's going to cost, and right now with the cost of goods, there's no way it's going to happen.
Further discussion?
I'll make a motion.
So, are we gonna motion to include this as a package, or are we doing these one at a time?
Either, either one.
I think reading the table, I think you should do them one at a time.
Well, that's, I was going to...
And then that will plug into the model.
Yeah.
And then we can adjust it as you go.
Right, live as we go, for sure.
And the answer could be zero to all of them, we understand that.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Councilmember Harrison, yeah?
Thank you. So, if we have this, you know, over $600,000, if we did decide to allocate it to road projects that we already did, so that way we're not spending additional money this year, as Mayor Protem Salvia suggested, that would potentially, Mayor Tim Salvia, you're suggesting, would leave us with another, you know, 500,000 or 700,000 that we would need for the community house? So, it wouldn't be that 1.2 million, we could potentially use the 646 still, even though we're, we need to use the bond money, put it in road projects we already use, we'll have savings then in our general fund to then use for the community house. We get a number that's 1.2 million, and now we already have, you know, 646 saved for that? Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, that's how I view this, you know, in a, I'll say, a perfect world, I would like to see in our multi-year budget, a placeholder for the community house, knowing that six members of council did approve that project, and unfortunately, due to inflation and mismanagement, it didn't happen on time. So, if we can keep that in our multi-year budget, and in my, and address our bonding issue by reallocating the dollars that were already spent, that resolves the problem that we're trying to solve tonight. Now, if at Monday's council meeting, all of these items came to the agenda, I might agree that they're all important, essential things that we need to add to the budget. What I'm, what I'm taking a firm position here on is protecting for the future, for a plan for community house, and appropriately managing the bond dollars.
And may I ask how our finance department feels about using this bond money to cover projects that we've already done in the city? Is that...
That's legal, correct?
Yeah. Like, is that okay to do that?
Oh, it's definitely, it definitely is okay.
That's for us to decide.
Right. I, I guess, you know, legally and in the budget, and, you know...
Finance clears that as, as an okay thing, that, that isn't, that is an option to do.
And, and just one more question, what was the percent that we're paying on this bond?
2.11.
2.1167. Cool.
And some change.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So, regarding the streets that, okay, so, regarding Helen Street, Helen Street has to be done, that was not planned for. So, we have to use at least that much of the 645, correct? Unless you take it out of...
Yeah, the only part of Helen that was planned for was that original, that 700 amount, the, the other two, the ass, the increase, and the, um, the connector...
And the water, yes.
For the water, that, that was not planned for.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that would be new.
So, so no matter what, we still have to take that out of the 600,000?
No, it could be diverse.
No.
No, or water sewer, correct, but...
As staff definitely is, is, the recommendations is, is to move forward, right?
Right, but if we took it out of water sewer, then we have to worry about the rates and, and, and deal, deal with that, as you stated already.
Which is passing the cost on the residents.
Correct.
Which would end up coming down, if you look to Councilmember Sage's point about unplanned for, and that, that's the water and sewer down there, the 948, that's what's above it, that's how that impact would be.
Right, okay. Now, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear to everyone that, that's still, it needed to be done, and it was just found out about, so...
Anthony, I have another question. So, kind of doing it the other way, so let's say we... So let's say we did the, the allocation the way the Mayor Pro Tem is suggesting. Okay? Then we come on Monday and we have all these projects that we think are essential. Where would that money come from Monday night if we voted on them?
Helen one would come out of your water and sewer.
Okay, okay. Then about, what about the rest of them? Just the general fund?
Well, your sidewalks, your sidewalk would come from general fund and your DWSRF would drop down here.
And then a little bit, that's where we get into the, where's the money getting transferred for each of the, each of the funds? And there, there may be then some recommendations on, on adjusting, uh, the currently budgeted transfers to accommodate where the expenses are gonna end up being at.
Is that a feasible way to do that? To spend this extra whatever it comes out to?
Well, how do you allocate that for the bond dollars though?
Well, no, if you.
Well, so bond, for instance, if I'm understanding correctly, then we'd say, okay, let's, let's take the balance of the bond dollars, put it towards Helen.
Yep.
Done. Bond dollars are complete. Um, we couldn't reduce the transfer to major and local streets. And by law, we're not allowed to transfer out of major and local streets. So 448,000 would be the most you could free up on the additional transfer, um, to major and local streets on top of the council dedicated point nine four millage. So 448 would be enough of that to supplant, change it and be something you were gonna transfer and not.
So you could do the 448 and then you're taking the 143 from the sewer fund.
Definitely mix, absolutely.
So then it almost comes out.
For sure.
But you couldn't do the side street. Those are not major and local. Do you have enough money to do Linwood, all those other ones?
Correct, right.
We couldn't, all those go away.
Cause those are, those are not budgeted for items. Those are new items that are not in the budget. So if you're saying, yes, we still want to, we would plug them in, like for instance, under roads. Like, well, no, we still wanna do the projects. We, we could plug them in there as an example, so.
So basically, general fund?
Correct, right. And that's, and it's that way by design, right? Cause general fund is what gives council the most flexibility to put the dollars where you see them best, best fit. So it's, it definitely, no matter how you kinda look at it, it still kinda boils down to general fund. Some of it is more of an accounting.
So then you're increasing, but if you did it that way, then you're increasing our spending by?
A lot of money.
By whatever we.
$650,000.
Correct. Where if, and this way, in theory, you're not doing that this year. But, and you can look at the community house in future years as you.
Oh, absolutely. That would be the first thing to look at for the plan is, is in the future years and looking at the, um, the additionals.
Councilmember Harrison?
I think Councilmember Albert already asked this, but just for a refreshment for me, that $100,000 allocated to community house, those are essential services that we need to maintain the building. The additional, you know, 1.2 million that we're hoping for that project remodel, that is aesthetic, that is necessary for the building to operate or that's?
Well, I think.
Help me remember.
That's.
It's to redo it.
Redo it to make it.
It's a remodel. It's roof siding and expansion basement. So there's increased usage, but it's also maintenance that we are gonna have to do as a city on that building. A roof, I mean, the roof is leaking.
And it was moving it into the 21st century to say, hey, this needs.
So, so.
I remember the drawings are beautiful.
So, so back to my earlier question. Why, if the roof is leaking now, why is that considered essential?
Because we can do some patches and repairs that don't cost significant dollars so that we don't have to spend money, you know, good money after bad.
Fix it and then tear it up two years later.
Okay.
In theory.
So if we did this plan, the, the one that Mayor Pro Tem Sylvia is suggesting, we could potentially even just use that 646 for, let's say it doesn't come back at 1.2, it stays at 3 million. We would still then have the 646 dollar to do the roof and to do the siding? If we did what council or Mayor Pro Tem Sylvia is proposing?
Right, but you, yes.
Is that true?
Yeah, but then, but then we wouldn't do these.
Either way you do it, you can do it that way or you can just take the money next year and.
Okay.
But the roof and siding money was going to be for the new building, not just to redo the building. Not just to redo that, those two pieces. That was for the whole entire renovation of it, correct?
Part of it, yes.
Right. And that's why if we did the roof, that was where we had talked that you're gonna replace the roof, have a new roof. And then, hey, we got a plan, we're gonna redo the remodel. Well, now you're gonna rip off, rip off the roof you just put on cause it, for the new renovation. So that was where we said, okay, well, let's do the patching. Let's do the tarring and, not tarring and feathering, but tarring and whatever. There's another word for it, um, on the roof to make sure it's, it's safe, isn't leaking and causing any water damage inside or, or dry rotting.
And we have the money for that somewhere else?
Well.
The community, the community house is doing it out of their, their budget. And it's something they're taking care of.
And we do have a maintenance line for community house as well.
Okay.
So, and that's 30,000 a year.
So he, here, here's my suggestion now is, I, I think maybe, again, just for discussion, maybe we need to, before we go through this list, I think we need to decide, are we going to spend this, the bond money on this? Or I'll, I'll call it, are we gonna do it the Mayor Pro Tem's way? And I think we should probably decide that before we go through this because I believe.
Maybe we shouldn't phrase it that way. It sounds like.
You gotta get, there's the, there's the allocating the bond money towards the existing street money that we have. Or there's allocating this bond money to these projects that administration has put forward. So to me, it seems like if, which, if we choose the one that allocates the money to existing projects, we probably don't need to go through these.
Correct.
Correct? Because we're not going to do that. And if we decide to go the other way of use this bond money, then we can go through and decide project by project. Does that, does that sound like, uh, plan? Councilmember Harrison?
Could we do project by project and then whatever money is left over from that? Say we deny some of these, then allocate that to community house? Or is that too much?
We still have to use it all, right?
Yeah, we have to.
We already used it with projects we've already completed in the budget, Helen and forth.
All right, so it, it has to be used. It can be used to allocate to existing projects that we've already done. Or it can be allocated to these projects that administration has. Those are kind of the two things I, I believe we're looking at tonight.
Right, but two of these are current projects right now. And they're currently being worked on. They're not past projects.
Councilmember Harrison, if I understand correctly, the plug figure would instead be whatever's left over, put in Helen. If I'm getting that right, like, yes, we wanna do the extension, bond, this, bond, the rest, put into Helen. And then you could absolutely do it that way as well.
Yeah, you could, yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess it's not all or.
Yeah.
It's not all or nothing.
Well, it's all, it's all or nothing for the other streets that we talked about.
Right.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, let's talk about the Letica Road project first. That's already approved under current funding, right? So I can put that aside. Really shouldn't even be part of this discussion, right?
Well, I'm sorry, which one?
Letica Road to Parkdale, from Parkdale to Romeo.
That 47.
Yes. It's already, it's already allocated, right?
So we're exceeding that off.
Let's X that off.
Agreed? Head nod?
Okay.
All right.
There we go.
It's like, uh, House Hunter International, members?
Okay, but.
I don't want, I mean, I don't wanna be cutting these off.
I'm just, I'm just making conversation.
Right, right, right.
Okay. So the two items on here for the DePoneo and the Water and Sewer Main, the 55 and 143 would have direct impact. If we do not do these out of the bond fund, correct? Bond proceeds, they would have a direct impact on the Water and Sewer Fund and affect the rates. Is that correct?
The.
Draw down your balance.
It's not affecting the rates, you're drawing down your balance.
Correct.
We have fund balance.
Right, so we're gonna draw.
Yeah, any expenses.
Gonna draw a dollar balance by 200,000.
In Water and Sewer, correct, yes.
Okay. The lobby renovation, I, you know, to me, that's something that could come out of the general fund whenever. The community house, I guess it just comes back down to the community house here. So we can earmark whatever commitment we wanna make outward, but it's still gonna come down to that budget cycle, what we can truly afford to allocate to the community house, right? We can have all good intentions here tonight and then come next year, we have to reassess.
We can't make a future city council.
Correct.
Make a decision based on what we do today.
Correct. But are those truly essential? If, if the electrical upgrade and HVAC replacement are needed to help Allen and the community house under their new agreement they have with us to be prosperous, is that a good use of bond proceeds then?
Yes. It's essential.
That's all, that, that's my comments.
Well, no, I, well, it needs to be clear though because the electrical upgrade is here because it has residential electric and does not have commercial electrical. That is a code issue, so it makes it essential to be done.
And we did hear from the, for, for example, the elevator, um, company that says that, you know, I don't know why we're having some issues, but one of the things is you don't have the right power coming to this building.
Right.
Yeah. And then also for the HVAC that does then, if we upgrade the electrical in certain instances, gives the option to put in and consolidate units and put in commercial rated units.
Councilmember Albert?
So administration has done a, a great job of putting together this, this sheet that we got a few days ago to look at. And then the meeting starts and we get a brand new sheet that we haven't seen before from Mayor Pro Tem about the community house. And now we've gotten this new last minute, 11th hour suggestion to use the 646 towards existing projects, ignoring what the, what administration has worked on and suggested to us. So I'm just, I, I'm concerned by that. And, and, you know, and then we're, we're setting aside money for the, and I go back to my earlier point. We're setting aside money for community house that we don't know when they will be able to come back with a new plan, whether it's gonna be 1.2, 1.5 or $3 million. Um, and so I just, I just feel we're ignoring the great work that was done by the administration. I agree with Councilmember Sage, you know, the, the Letica Road project can go to the, to the, uh, road fund. But I think the, these other things are more visible projects that our, our residents and our citizens are gonna say, wow. Uh, and I don't want the water rates and sewer rates to go up again. I know they won't go up, we'll just deplete the fund, but I'm looking ahead at the water rates with a 1.76% increase for water, Gleewa Water. I'm talking about Gleewa, not City Water. And 3.73% rates for sewer rates. And I live on the side of town that everybody comes to me and says, what the heck's going on with the water rates? We, we hold our breath when we get the, the, the bill, especially now with, you know, what's going on with the drought and the, and our lawns and everything else like that. So, uh, you know, I'm in the camp that we, we go with administration's recommendation with a couple tweaks to the road fund and others, just, just to, um, to, 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 to get this done. Uh, and then next year, if we, if, um, uh, Allen and his team come back with, here's our plan, here's a real number. I've been able to raise 20% of this through private funding. And the rest of it, I'm gonna come to city council and here's my timetable. I don't wanna set aside money for something that we don't, we don't, we don't have any plans for yet.
Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, yes, thank you. So no, and first, I, I do wanna thank administration for bringing this forward and, and doing this hard work of really bringing us what's essential to be done right now. And your opinion of how we should actually use these bond dollars. Uh, that's why we have you here, so. Um, and I also, along the same lines, already stated my feelings about the community house not having a full project lineup and front dollars, knowing what it's going to be. I think this is, um, it's not the time and place to discuss this. I do not like the fact that it was presented prior to the city administration's, uh, package to us. I think that should've come later on, if, if, if at all. And it should've been announced to the council people ahead of time that we were going to be presented with that. I don't think that was actually fair to us either because to me, it threw us off focus on what was really essential for the community. And, um, I will still go by the fact that we have not seen any financial dollars, a financial analysis of what has been happening at the community house since this has been taken over with the new contract. And I don't think that we should be using taxpayer dollars for that until that is shown and proved to us and that the 990s have been filed. So we know that the community house is in good form to go after, uh, tax dollar, not tax dollars, but grant money for anything as well that might be able to help make some of those renovations come to fruition. Plus I also, on a side note, I thought we had presented that package of with this project to the senators for some project package to be picked out of. And we haven't heard on that yet either. So if they're looking, working to select that as a project to give us the money to help us do that, I mean, I don't, is that something still coming? Is it not? Is it gone?
We submitted.
Yeah, it's definitely not gone. We are still hitting the electeds and still through National League of Cities, any other grant opportunities for all those 3 million as presented, even the original ones, to, to still find funding for those as well. Yeah.
Okay, so then if that's still something and we haven't heard, then why would we take real good tax dollars right now and put them aside when, and then just reallocate them later on? I, I don't see the purpose here without having a full plan presented before us. Thank you. Can I make a motion to go through the list of priority projects? And we'll, um, add the community house presentation to the bottom of the list since it came in after, um, our list that was given to us from the city administration.
Okay, so I guess is there, is there a mo, so the, a motion to go through this list and use the bond fund money for this list?
Correct.
Is that?
Individually. I was gonna go through each one individually.
Right, but I mean, I think we should just, in gen, in general? Nick, are you?
Yeah, it's either go through the projects or make it a sit. The best way to do is somebody make a motion to pick the whole 650 and throw it to the streets, which is fine. And then if that doesn't pass, then you go back the other way.
Before we do that, cause I'm willing to support that. Before we do that, can I make one more suggestion to council? So if I take the sidewalk contract, um, the DW, DWSRF contract, Helen Street and the community house, that comes to 319,810.11. I subtract out the LRPP road project, cause that's already in another fund. I allow, um, the lobby renovation to be handled through general fund at whatever time appropriate. That leaves 326,939.89 to go back, reallocate those bond proceeds back into existing project.
Can I just ask for clarity? So, so on purpose, you skipped all the Millenfields, the extra streets, right? Cause that's where that money, our bucket money came from what was left. Not, not back into existing Helen. We want, our suggestion was let's get how many streets we just named done. So we'd do none of those because you'd be putting the 350 back into Helen that's already been.
Correct.
Yeah, but just so I wanna make sure we're clear on that.
That would have to be, right.
Yep.
If that, if that's the direction, to go back.
Absolutely.
Into existing project. Or I could be swayed to go with new Millenfield.
I, I was a little confused at that last part, Mr. Sage.
Okay. So if I take.
I, I got, I got it. You, you added up the top three.
Six forty-six, 750, right? I'm gonna take out of consideration the 20 for city hall, the 47, 529 for the LRPP road project. And then look at the other. So if I do the sidewalks. So, if I do the sidewalks, DWSRF, the additional money for Helen, and the community house, that's 320,000.
So, you wanna take half, half the bond money for that?
For that, then I'm good with either allocating the remainder of the bond proceeds to either existing project or new Millenfill. I have no...
Is this, is this what you're, you're saying the 326, 810 for using the bond fund? And then you would have a balance of 326, 940. You're saying it could either be Millenfill, or it can go to...
Existing projects, as, as Mayor Protem had...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so Councilmember Peterson, you had a motion to...
Yep, I would, I would like to make a motion to approve the priority projects as presented by city administration, excluding City Hall, and, yeah, just excluding the City Hall and the Letica Road.
So, that's...
So, this is that.
Okay, so then, so then number-wise, that's what we have, then those two pulled out down below, they're not out of the bond, and then that would be the remaining in the bonds.
And then for your, in your motion, are you doing the 326 to Millenfill or the 326 to that?
Correct. Yeah, correct, as, as you, as it was made part of the original priority project list.
New, the new, the new streets.
Correct, the new streets.
Support.
So, motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Further discussion?
I just want to clarify, we're, this is two different motions, or...
No, it's the same, it's, it's a motion to...
Approve everything on this list except the City Hall lobby renovation and the LRPP road project, which is the Letica Road from Parkdale to Romeo.
And then with, with using the, the bond fund money?
With using the bond fund money and includes that Millenfill.
Wait, so, correct, includes the Millenfill at the 3, 327 thing.
No, Millenfill itself is...
No, that's, that's right. What, the bucket, that's the bucket.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, the balance remaining, which would be, in this case, as it stands, the 326, yeah, 940.
And whatever's left over then is put back.
Okay. Is there a discussion?
I have a, I have a comment.
Mayor Protem, help you.
Yes, I would like to ask if we could amend that motion to, as presented, but tie a bring-back to administration regarding the community house, to bring back a full proposal for the community house within six months. Just something that ties and recognizes, I, I'd like to see either head nods or a vote from council tonight. Do we still have support for this project or not? Because I, I'm not sure I'm feeling that support for the project.
Well, I'll, I'll start. I stated that once we had a project, a full project plan back presented to us with real numbers, then yes, I, I said, then council should sit down and discuss how we're going to come about that project. However, I, I will not accept an amendment like that to this, because this is regarding using total dollars that we need to use right now, and having that is just, that's something that, if that is what the council wants later on, then administration, go get the plans, work with the community house, and bring it back to us. It does not need to be tied to these dollars that need to be spent right now for essential services, because that in itself is not an essential service.
I think it's not tied to the dollars, it's just a statement of support.
No, but then, then it needs to be separate, because that, that is not about these specific dollars, and this is not what was presented from the administration either. It would have been part of the administration's thing to have some of this money put aside then, I think then, then it would be different, but it wasn't. It was...
We would be amenable to what Council, what Mayor Protem said, as a separate motion, and to give us direction to bring it back, put a timeframe to it, work with Allen, let's get it done. I absolutely agree with that. I think you were saying the same thing, Councilmember.
Right, I, I just don't want it tied...
Separate motion.
Yeah, it's always a separate motion, it shouldn't be tied to these dollars right now, because this is a bond as well, and if for, bond requirements, you can't have other things tied to the approval, correct? You usually just keep it, you're not going to have it on some future project of what we're approving today in a motion.
Right, correct, yeah. It, it would certainly be cleaner to have that be a follow-up motion.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
No.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
No.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you, it's, and that's uncomfortable for, but we're gonna move forward, and we're gonna do a second motion hopefully, so we can move forward with the community house.
All right, so, I'd like to make a motion to direct administration within six months to come back to council with a, gosh, as detailed as a plan that we've never seen for the community house, including we've never seen a detailed bid for the 3 million dollars. So, I'd like to see that within six months, working with Allen Smith and the community house board, to bring that back to council. And, and by the way, council, in, in the meantime, we are not collecting any revenue from that contract.
Correct, that's right.
So, you know, the community house is a revenue-producing asset, use of funds, versus these projects do not produce revenue for the city.
And they're essential services, so they never would.
Motion by the Mayor Protem, is there support?
Support with discussion.
Support by Councilmember Sage, Councilmember Sage.
Allen, is that feasible? Six months? Okay, support.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So, I, I would like that tied to actually seeing the financial stability of the community house and, and updated 990s. I think it's only fair, it's, uh, yep.
You come to the microphone, Allen, and introduce yourself.
Since I started, sorry about that, it's been repeated that the 990s, I will be back to Councilwoman Peterson promptly. All 990s have always been filed. Mary Lee filed one in 18. Our new accountant, Pete Boyce, does it religiously. This year, we've got an extension as always, because our filing date for the 990 is just at the end of the tax year. So, accountants are incredibly busy. I have a letter from the, wherever, whether it was the IRS or Michigan, acknowledging the fact that we've extended it. So, it's always been extended, but I don't know what you're looking at, 990s are always there.
Okay, well, no, I, I'm, actually, on the IRS site regarding the 990s, it only, it shows that there, it is being held by, it is stated that it's being held by the IRS, it's in review, so, and that's only for the 2020, it doesn't show, it won't give any further information for 2021, et cetera, so.
Why is it showing that?
Okay.
It's always been filed a long time.
I've seen them.
I haven't ever really think about it.
Oh, no, it's, oh, no, it's fine, it just, it does show that there was a loss for 2020.
When, actually, when things are running extremely well.
Oh, no, that's fine, but that is the only document that we, we should have access to, to know the financial stability, because that's what's reported to the IRS.
If someone let me know there's a problem, we will look into it.
Well, unfortunately, when you're just looking at finances of something, you're looking up 990s for the community, and that's one of them, so, because it's under the city, so.
Further discussion? I'd just like to say that I fully support the community house renovation. I know we had a vote here, that I think there were six to one, supported it, fully support it, fully support Allen, and hope to see something in six months. And then, you know, we've talked about the different financing things, and I believe the community wants us to update the community house and make it, you know, a destination in this town. And it was very disappointing with the situation, that it went to 3 million dollars, but hopefully we can rectify that and get this moving forward before they go to the community. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, that 6-1 vote for the public to understand why I voted no, and I'll restate what I stated back then, and that is because at the time, it was not an essential service, we were not given the true information, as we found out later. So, that is exactly why I was not in support of that. It was being used for, using dollars that were not essential at the time. So, if we've made it through that and moving forward and have something presented to us to support that, then it would be totally a different situation. But in 2020, when that was brought before us, that was not an essential service at that time.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Okay, so, did we, do we have to go through these now, or did, were we done?
We're done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, for all your work on that. So, now we are going to move on to 2024 Main Street Future Project.
Mr. Mayor, Marcy, if you don't mind, let's flip to the easier one, let's do the rates, because it's just a simple information that we're gonna bring to Monday night officially. So, let's get that one done, because this, we're gonna be, that one's a little more complicated.
Marcy?
As Marcy's pulling that up, so the, the water rates that, that are being recommended is a pass-through on the three sides. We have commercial charges that we pay directly to GLEWA for commercial, for the sanitary use. Those are just as GLEWA charges us, they give us the amounts, and then that's what we update into the rates. There's no markups, there's no, it's just strictly what they charge added on. On the east side for, we're on GLEWA, and that's, those rates are through Shelby. And one thing that's changed recently in the last month was there was, I'm sure everyone has heard somewhere, Highland Park and the water rates, and some communities are holding and putting it in escrow and all that sort of thing. Highland Park has since, what that means for the rates is that there was an inherent built-in addition to everyone that gets GLEWA water across all of the communities for Highland Park. They have started paying, Highland Park's made an over $1 million in arrears for over 14 months, I believe, and started paying back what they were supposed to be paying from the lawsuit. So, what happened, oh, thank you, yep, there's the, there's the letter.
You're gonna go in the manager's packet tomorrow.
Yep, and that'll be in the packet, because, because we just received this one. So, the rates then from Shelby, they went and said, you know, we pay above the 20% markup above the wholesale. Well, Shelby's rates went down, because GLEWA removed the Highland Park charges from all the communities, since Highland Park's now paying again. So, the rates you have here are the lower of, if anyone happened to have seen the initial ones, when we got the letters, these are the lower of the two. And it's the same story with the Water Resource Commissioner's Office, because they get billed from GLEWA for the sewer. Same thing on the pass, pass-through Highland Park amount was removed, and so the rates that are in here are the current updated rates from WRC for the pass-through without Highland Park added into them.
Maybe easier to jump to the end on this one, rather than to go through this. You've probably had a moment to look at what we're proposing in comparison to what our current rates are. The orange in that table is the current rates, the light blue is what we're proposing. So, on the top side, that's the well side, then the GLEWA side, and then sewer is the same for, for all.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah, when you look at, keeping that on the screen, when you, when you look at the rates, I understand the pass-through rates, but then there's also, if you scroll over to the left, it's, it's, it's the infrastructure one for both infrastructure fixed rate and the infrastructure fixed rate quarterly at sewer. Those are both going up. That's not driven by GLEWA, that's our way of just adding money to our infrastructure for future projects.
Planning for those next projects.
Do we need to, again, water is such a huge issue, and we're, we're getting hit, do we need to increase the, because we've stayed with the infrastructure fixed rate, there was no change on the water until 2021, then we went up to 2518 in 2022, and now we're going up another 1% to 2562 for the water. And then the sewer, we kept it steady at $24 for many years, we went up to 2490. You're asking now to go to 2490. So, again, do we have, I understand the pass-through rates for GLEWA, do we have to put, increase the infrastructure ones, or can we provide our, our residents some relief?
On, on the historical side, when we do the pass-throughs, we apply it to infrastructure too, because when GLEWA does it, they, they have both components in their rates that they do. They have a capital and their commodity in with it. So, we have in the past mirrored those to also match our infrastructure and capital as well. Separately, if we go through and have a DWSRF or, or SRF plan, or we want to do some large projects or something that's gonna take our multi-year budget and fund balance in water and sewer down below the recommended levels, that's when we start doing a, an analysis with those projects to say, okay, how are we gonna fund them? Is it best to pay cash for them? Is it best to add five cents per unit to make sure that we stay even keel over the three years?
Because we've, we, again, we haven't had a infrastructure meeting in a while, but, you know, we talked about the water storage units and everything. I don't see anything in, that we're doing to justify the increase in the infrastructure rates.
We went through the Rafftelis, council allowed us to move forward with the modeling with Rafftelis. So, we put in future projects, and we have them vet, and they did, last year, they did a, a vetting of our rates, to make sure that our proposed rates would, would meet the requirements of, of maybe a DWSRF or an SRF bond, the payment for those. So, each time we're, we're putting it into the model, we're running through that, there may be a time when that needs to be adjusted, if you're taking on additional SRF or DWSRF projects. But for right now, we believe that what's presented and according to our current plan would be sufficient to, to, and we, we're not recommending a reduction to what we're, what we're proposing.
I'm not suggesting a reduction, I'm suggesting keeping the infrastructure one the same. I, I'm gonna support this, because you, you have to, but I would ask that administration, we put together again another brochure or something, explain this, because on my, on the boards I'm reading, everybody are, they're, they're wondering why our rates are, are not being addressed, what is the city council doing? I always tell people, you know, it's GLEWA plus 20% is my, my pat answer, when I'm, you know, I'm stopped multiple times in this. So, if you, if administration could put something together that explains what this, why each of these charges have gone up, why these are truly pass-through rates, and not, we're just picking a number out of the sky.
And to let them know that those are passed through every, almost every year.
In the comparison between, between communities, sometimes we get called in there and say, I have a friend in Rochester Hills, how come their bill is less than my bill? Well, Rochester Hills bills differently. They bill, you know, two months, we bill three months at a time. So, there's some different things that could be addressed in that communication piece that might, that might answer some questions that, that arise for you and for us, too.
And I might suggest, maybe, Nick, we can look at that, I know many years ago, there was a thing you could do to your sprinkler systems, to where the city had a, had a plan to get there.
Irrigation meter.
Again, maybe, maybe administration can bring...
Push that back out again.
Bring that back out again, because we're, I, I, whenever the next bill comes out, I don't even want to open that one. I'm gonna need a cosigner to pay it, so.
And the city also offers a break-even analysis related to the irrigation meter. If you call us and you ask us to plug in your last two years' usage, we will let you know, based upon that historical usage, how many years it would take you to break even on the, the implementation of the irrigation.
Thank you. Anything we can do to just keep our residents educated on, on water rates, it's still a hot button.
Sure.
Councilmember Mayor Protem, help you.
Thank you, thank you. So, tagging on Councilmember Albrecht's comments, I was thinking the same thing, like, I really think it's time to have a HOA meeting. We haven't had one, I think we had a Zoom one over the past couple of years, but between water rates, because it is a hot button, and I think people forget to adjust the times, they lose power, and then they're watering in the middle of the day instead of the middle of nine. So, I think if we could do that HOA meeting sometime this summer, and then also talk about the, the big infrastructure project on Dequinder, because that's gonna affect...
That's a very good idea.
Those big HOAs, so, was thinking about that, so thank you.
Can do that.
I just, I just say, I've been on city council a long time, we have this conversation every year, it's, it's unfair, it's not right, but it is reality. And, which is, so, Mr. City Manager, do we want to do this, can we do this tonight?
If you would like... If you would like to, you could. Traditionally, we talk about this, that staff, and you've done it on Monday nights, but it's up to you.
Councilmember Harrison?
I would like to make a suggestion that we not pass any rate increases on a special meeting on a Thursday night. I think it's more transparent to do it on a Monday.
I agree.
Very good.
May see some of these same slides Monday.
Good.
It's fine.
And then I'll save it, because I think this is the, the key is, is where you're getting your water. If you're on the well side, the proposed rates, if you're a low user, your annualized change, as proposed here, is less than $17 per year. If you're on the GLEWA side, and you're a low user, it's less than $20 a year. But we can go through that Monday night.
Very good. We now on to the Main Street.
Now, so, this, I want you to, we're kind of, sort of time. This is a giant elephant in, in the whole state of Michigan for us. This is, we've, we've pined over this a long time. So it's broken into a couple of different projects. I will tell you that it's been very frustrating for staff for the last four years by the moving target of MDOT. I'm not criticizing MDOT, but this plan was started seven years, we, we had seven years to plan Main Street makeover. They hired me to come in and outmanage that. I had three years head start to get everybody on board, so we can answer all the tough questions and properly fund and plan for funding of these things. This start, this was, the last we heard, it was going to be 2027, I believe they were going to build it, which meant let it end of 2025. Then it became, well, 26 and 24, and then this year, and then next year. So we kind of went to MDOT, put on the brakes, and listen, we're thankful that we're going to do this. Let's get the scope worked out first. So the scope of this project that we're talking about, there's two different things, sir. We'll talk about the one on the right last. The Main Street picture there is, it's basically this simple. MDOT wants to widen the road six inches on each side. If you look at that ribbon, it's not like Main Street, where we have a lot of time. So we would, we have to take out curbs, sidewalks, pavement, put in new curb sidewalks, pavement, lights, things like that, that are all running in that little ribbon. If that picture was extended north, that ribbon gets really small. So there's not a lot of room there. They are trying to avoid buying a lot of property and, and go through all that, the appraisals and all that good stuff, so.
Didn't we already buy that property?
No. No, not, 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 I'm talking on the left picture, sorry, left picture.
Oh.
Yeah, so going up Main Street, there's a few that, the right-of-ways are wonky, so they're going to pick those up. But in essence, it's, all of this to rip out Main Street is to gain six inches on each side. The road's horrible, it's got bricks underneath it, we get all that.
What does six inches do for anybody?
Yeah.
It gets, right now, we have 10-inch lanes, so we're not even compliant, it's pretty tight there, as you know. Yeah, 10 foot, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, 10 foot.
Well, it is tight, so just six inches makes a difference?
So that's fine, it's MDOT's road, it will meet the standards, we're, we're good with that. What, but unlike Main Street makeover, this had no, all the other utilities in here are on us. Not on them. So they're going to do pavement, sidewalks, lights, things like the hard surface stuff, that's fine. So knowing that was coming up at some point, we went out and were able to get a, Anthony Howell, much of a grant, 600 for the. There you go. There you, so, so we have 400, 400 and something, Sue? So for that, reading out to the right picture, to relocate and realign Romeo. We went and city council approved, we bought the sliver of land from the gentleman that owns the condos, or the condo association, that allows us to do that. It's not a perfect fix, we had meetings with the residents, they still don't like it, because you can't, it makes Lysander a one-way only. So nobody's happy with this whole thing, Dairy Queen guy hates Albertson, I'm sorry, and Albertson's to the left. So, but, we came to an agreement, that's what we're going to do, we got the grant to do that. A lot of that is in the DDA. So the DDA's been socking away money and capital unallocated, right? So there's about $400,000 in that fund that will help pay for our portion of that. So our portion of that is like $212,000 above the $400,000. Again, tonight, we're not asking for anybody to make a decision, I'm just trying to get you ready, because in the next easy council meeting, maybe, like the 27th of July, we're going to start coming at you with facts, figures, and this is what we want to do. We have a couple of options. If we don't have $212,000 to finish that project, then we can just say, thanks for the grant, just repave it, and MDOT will repave it on their dime, zero to us. The new snag was, as they started doing analysis of the water system, our folks are very aware of the situation of those water mains. Sue, you want to pull up your map? Watch this, this is the craziest thing you're ever going to see. So there's a, remember the 100-year water main, transmission main, we just replaced? Well, there's more of that on Main Street, from the bridge to Tinket. And you're going to see a map here in a second, that shows you how, over the decades, literally 100 years, this thing ties in. If you were, if you were going down South Main, now from the Paint Creek Bridge, all the way to the south end of town, there are two 12-inch pipes, one on east side of the street. Nobody's connection to their building goes under Main Street. If somebody's pipe breaks, you don't have to dig up Main Street to get at it, they're all lateral. If you look at these, it's hard to see, but you'll, when you get your map, check it out. They're all coming in from, they're all, the whole system's under pressure. They come in from Woodward, Ferndale, Glendale, and they all end up making it work. But there's many instances that there are leads that go across the street to get to the west side, when you're an east-side water user, and vice versa. So our staff analyzed this, and it started about six years ago. Back with Bill Boland, actually, said, you got a problem here, not knowing we're going to redo Main Street. But if that thing breaks, you're going to be digging up Main Street, 14 feet down, Jason, right? And you're going to have a problem. So now, all of a sudden, they came to us and said, hey, we're ripping up Main Street, but we're not digging down. So if you want to have an opportunity to do anything, you might want to do it now, because if you open our road after we build it, it's on you, just like any other road, right? If something breaks underneath the road that we didn't fix, it's on you. Okay, we can live with that. So we internally even had disagreements about, should we roll the dice and not hope this happens? Because here's the ticket. To do the right thing, which is put a 12-inch water main, which Eagle says we have to put 12 inches now, go from four, there's fours, tens, eights, all kinds of stuff. To go to 12 on both sides is $3.3 million. We haven't budgeted for that. In the last six years of people talking about this, it never came to the Infrastructure Committee, it never came to anywhere with a number of $3.3 million. We don't even have that in our fund balance for water and sewer. So if we want to do this, here we, that's the whole discussion Marcy was alluding to, we have to start talking about the capital component of the water and sewer. Obviously, we could bond for it, and then we'd have to raise rates enough to cover the bond payments. We could draw down the fund balance by making, it'd be a 20-year bond, probably, to pay those off. Would you have any money if anything else in the city breaks? So very discerning to us that we have to deal with this right now, and the kicker is this. They told us by December, we have to tell them we're replacing the water main or not. We have two ways to do it. We can subcontract it and bond for it, and then we have to deal with Davis Bacon and all this other good stuff. So we're going to do a, we're doing it right now, we've been working on this for the last three weeks. Probably, I'm hoping for the July 27th meeting, because I talked to the mayor, it's a pretty light meeting. We can come and have a more detailed discussion for you, so you can grasp all this. But that's the looming number that scares the crap out of us, I'm not going to lie. So we understand the whole concept is the roads open, way cheaper to do it. Now, if you do that, after that road's put back down, you can double that number. You can't rip out that road once it's down. So we're trying to do the right thing as stewards of the fund balance, but we're going to give you options. So we talked about bonding, drawing down fund balance, a combination thereof. We talked about with the fire chief, is it necessary? Are we having a problem with fire protection? The answer is no, but those are 100-year, one's 1914, it's over 100 years old. That's not going to make it. Jason's educated us on, when they dig that road up, they might not be going down by those pipes, but. Pulling, pulling the bricks, doing all that, you're going to disturb that soil. Highly likely, it happened on Pine Street, we tried to avoid it on Pine Street, we ended up ripping out the whole dang pipe and putting a new one in, because it just couldn't hold up. You can't keep banding it forever. If they break it, they have to fix it, but that's a temporary fix. So it's just a, a little bit of a preview of the fun ahead for you all. We will give you a really good report and options, and then try to get some direction from this council to help us with MDOT in. And God forbid, if they now say, oh, we just, we're kidding, it's 2029, great, then we have more time to save money. But right now, they're pushing us to make a decision by December. Is that pretty good, Steph?
Yes.
Al, good.
Al?
We need to know by December, both they have to have designed plans by December. So we really need to know.
Right, go ahead.
Right, so the preliminary, preliminary plans due on December of 2022. So in order to include the design of the water main with MDOT project, then they want us to basically give them the alignments, the, the limits of the project, and where the water main is going, top of the project, and then submit it to them, so they can include it in their package and meet the deadline for the.
And we figure that's about $100,000 in preliminary work that we would have to do, correct? Okay, so that, in the next few months, that's what we would be looking for, to get at least that, not have the money available to build it, because it's not a build until, the letting's at the end of '23, but the build's in '24.
The letting is end of 2023, construction will start in 2024, per the current schedule, unless funds gets moved around, and then they extend it further.
Now, we, we are very aware of, there's talk of other monies coming out from the government. Doesn't preclude us from, the, the big gamble would be pay the $100,000 for the engineers to get it ready, so we can say we're in, and then keep looking for monies to pay for the actual project before they put a shovel in the ground. That's, that's an opportunity, maybe, we're hoping. Points, it depends on your points, but. Exactly, that's going to go to the Infrastructure Committee, absolutely.
Thank you. So have we, I mean, their deadline, is that because they're using federal dollars as well?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, so then, is there a way that we can, I know the state has a lot of funding right now. I mean, is there a way to get on that? Because this is like a, it's a perceived necessity, right? Is there a way?
So, so we talked about that already, and it's going to come down to these points. When I look at it in a simple, a 1914 water main should get you some points.
Right.
You know, problem is, the fire chief can't put an affidavit saying, I can't fight a fire, because it works, but it's so old that you know. So we're hoping that we'll point high, don't, don't know though.
Yeah, so like, if we submit for DWSRF, just basically what we're doing currently with those water main replacement, we will have to submit project plan. First, we have to send a, a letter of intent by November of this year, then submit project plan by next year in April, and then hope that we score high. Because the higher you score, the sooner you get the project on their construction. If we don't score high enough, there's like multiple communities, they submit for those loans.
Right.
And if we don't score high enough, then we will not be within timeframe that we need to be with an MDOT project. So I guess we have to score high enough in order to get with their schedule. Plus, you're not just paying for plans and specs to put the project together, you have to pay extra money to put the project plan together, which is basically a report to tell them why. You give them the history of the city, like, there's a lot of requirements needed to be all included in the report and submitted to them, and then they go through the ratings, and then that's when you score. How you, it depends on how you score, like, at the end of the day. But also, you're paying additional money for the report. If you go with only bond money, then you'll only be paying for plans and specs, and you don't need to worry about project plan and Eagle requirements, basically, for DWSRF. So there is like savings, and also, you're paying extra money for meeting the requirements. And at the end of the day, probably, will be the same, and we have to score high in order to meet the deadline, right?
Do we have to call something out or all correct? So we have kind of two contractors working this entire month.
Exactly.
Right, so, yeah, so we cannot use MDOT contractor, we'll have to have our own contractor, because we will bid the project separately, and then we separate them, build separately for the DWSRF. Then we have two contractors on Main Street, trying to coordinate between them.
Well, since we are the first settlement in Oakland County, we should use that at the top line.
We're going to use everything, okay, we're going to cry, we're going to, yeah.
But now, I, 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 I think that that's something that we need to get started on sooner, rather than later, so it's not coming at us at the very end, yeah.
Councilmember Harrison?
Is there a water quality issue with the pipe, or fear? Or is it just that it's not large enough to fight fires?
Size and age, basically.
Okay, size and age.
Breakdown, possibly.
Is there concern that there would be a breakdown with construction happening on that road? And would MDOT be responsible for any of that, for disrupting the pipe?
They would ban it, they would fix it, like we did Pine, until, if it keeps breaking every 10 feet, then they're going to look at us like, nice try.
Yeah.
So MDOT also, they're doing a storm sewer installation, and then they're going to have underground detention along Main Street to help with drainage and flooding issues. So they're digging next to the water main, so, an old water main. There is a chance that they're going to break it, but like they said, we'll be just replacing segments of the broken water main. It won't be the whole block.
They wouldn't do the full replacement.
Right.
Yeah.
And if you have the under-sized pipe here.
Is it ductile or cast?
Size.
It's cast, that's what I thought.
Because the current DWSRF projects we're doing is because of six inches in the orange water line, that's what's under there. So we would be being proactive by doing it with this project.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, so I, I think we have to find a way to do this, it's so important. My question for the chief, though, is, so if we can, from a fire standpoint, currently, we're okay. What if, what if, I mean, that's a prime area for development there along Main Street. What if height of some of those buildings changed? Is that a consideration, or they only look at current?
Currently, and the city manager maybe can correct me, but the current zoning for that corridor does not allow anything above three stories.
And all of me.
Schneider's the most you could get.
Then be required to be.
Right.
So, you know, currently, based on the zoning and the structures that are there, there's a, there's a very complicated formula, you take the size of the building, the cubic feet, and how much water you need. Currently, we have that available water and pressures with the way the setup is right now. Obviously, it's not ideal, and I agree with you, this is the right time to go ahead and do it. But when we started to take a look at the points that we could put together, I wasn't able to be able to do the calculations and say, oh, we're short by 1,500 gallons a minute, so we really need to do this. So I, so that's one of the reasons why I was saying, well, we couldn't use fire as a reason to do, to do it to get points. Obviously, it makes sense to do it.
More ugly reality. So we're saying, Councilmember Peterson, you have another comment?
I do, I would just, because this is such a big, major project, what does city administration feel about having this whole project discussion come back to all seven, instead of just an infrastructure?
I mean, we planned on the 27th, if we could be ready by then, I'm not sure that we're ready that quick. But it's, it's going to have to come here anyway, so how do you feel?
I just, there's a lot of detail, and I really don't want to, like, not hear the engineering and other, other department heads' comments on, on that. So I think it would be good to have that project come before, since it is huge, and it's going to really affect the community.
Yeah, and the way, for me, the way I would use infrastructure facilities as a sounding board, get it flushed out, so when it comes here, it's fully done. Not that they know anything, you all don't, but that helps, that's a good sounding board.
It's never been that way.
Well, I'm not going to argue that point again tonight, but it, it does happen, because we actually paid $21,000 to have people sit in those meetings that I never got to hear an engineer that paid by tax dollars speak, so, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, anything else?
No, that's, thank you very much for your attendance.
Are you going to have an update on the report from Mr. Petrino?
I can tell you that, so today, Joe Allen and I talked to, to James, and we will have, the deadline for the applications is next Monday. And then, James, it's going to take, I think, six days to get a report to us to look at. And then we'll be back on the 27th in a closed session. Attorney Crowe already prepared the document for us, then we can talk about them. So they're going to put it through their matrix, I won't say what I always say, but get rid of people that don't meet the minimum requirements. Hopefully, we'll have a nice pool of candidates. And then we're going to bring that to all seven of you, and say, you all look at it, we'll get you that ahead of time. And then you can say, these are the kind of folks that we would like to talk to. Thank you for all that, the folks that met with James, I think that helped him get a good grip on how he's going to, what that, but we will see all of them. Joe Allen said we want to make sure we see all of them, so you can see all of them, just so, full transparency, right? And then, then you weed it down, and then we would pick, however many we want to interview. You told us, I know the stat, you want the staff involved, we'll do that, get it to a couple, and then bring it back here. And we'll work that out, once we see where the candidates are, but we're trying to keep it moving. Under some reason.
Some reason you want it moving, huh?
Any further comments miscellaneous from any city?